Again, thanks for everybody getting up here. We're November 12th, the meeting. Any public comment? None. Let's come back to approval of our minutes and bills. Communications.
Okay, bills, all the normal bills. If you see there, there's two $13,000 bills. Those are for the comp plan and long range transportation plan, and I'll discuss those in new business. As far as the communications, the majority of them were either LSA grant, letters of support, the Pendot multimodal letters of support, or the DCED grants for letters of support. There was one in there from Mary Liz to Covington Township on their wastewater treatment plant expansion. So it was an Act 537 revision. We did recommend approval of that. Other than that, like I said, there was one grant there for the rail authority, item F. The rail authority is looking at upgrading the trackage with some, replacing some worn rails and adding some sightings and things. The majority of that work will be in Monroe County, but that does extend a little bit into Lackawanna to Moscow. So other than that, like I said, everything is basically the normal letters of support.
I'm sorry. I'd like to, just one comment under I on the city's letter. It's Mary Street. It says Hollow Avenue, but it's hollow, H-O-L-L-O-W.
Yeah, that's the way it came in on the, the application, so I will change that.
Yeah, it's Hollow.
I thought it was wrong.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on communications? I noticed this is just for the Monroe County local share. Is anybody applying for the Luzerne County local share account?
We do not qualify for Luzerne County. Luzerne County is only Luzerne County.
They're on their own. Yeah, they're on their own. Right.
They got a pile of money.
Mm-hmm. That's why they're on their own.
Damn. All right. Okay. Good try. Any other questions or comments on our correspondence?
I guess it's better if the casino is right in the county, right? That's why Luzerne gets a bigger chunk of money?
Well.
Well, the legislature established it. Luzerne County got all the money from Mahogan Sun, Monroe County, Mount Airy, that's shared between Monroe, Lackawanna, Wayne Pike, and one other, I can't remember.
Whatever, I guess whatever, whatever touches.
Arben and Northampton too, right?
Wow.
Because whatever touches Monroe, right?
Mm-hmm. Anything is a contiguous, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Let's move on to old business then. Transportation planning.
Okay, you'll notice the agenda of the transportation planning is a little different now. It's following the format of our Unified Planning Work Program, which went into effect in July. The all UPWP had six tasks with about two dozen subtasks under that. Pendot and federal highways wanted things combined and consolidated, and things that we couldn't address during the course of time, they wanted to have eliminated. So administration now includes administration and coordination, and basically that just involved preparing all the documentation for our combined LLTS meeting, and if anybody just noticed, Bruce just joined us. The main thing that we've been dealing with, and Brenda can jump in here if she needs to, we're still battling over who owns the Mill Street Bridge in Dunmore. We're waiting for documentation from Dunmore that says that the county owns it. They're claiming there was a PUC ruling and also some court decisions, but basically all they've sent us is copies of articles from the Scranton Times.
Didn't that what Liz mentioned last week or last month?
Yeah, it's still going on.
Yeah, but Steve, I mean, speak to the downside of this, of, you know, not determining who the owner is, that the bridge just continues to deteriorate, and it's going to get to a point where, you know, it's, yeah, it's going to be closed, and it's a safety issue as well. So, you know, if they have that documentation, hopefully they will produce it and send it to the county solicitors, and then they can deal with that. But unfortunately, you know, the clock keeps ticking and the bridge just keeps getting worse.
I, I believe it's the counties, only from the simple reason is, years ago, Harry, you might even remember this, when, remember when Nicky Scandell was the county engineer? That's a while ago. Nicky called me because the county wanted to put some money into the bridge, like years ago, and he was running some stuff by me. So I think that was back in the Luger-Petnado days. So that was, so I firmly, but you need documentation.
And I know. And I seem to remember that the county did it the first time. When?
There was some work done there like one time. Yep.
Well, the PUC issued, you know, all of their correspondences to Dunmore, not to the county. So again, we just need the documentation that shows that, and then, you know, whoever it is, figure it out and move forward with getting a new bridge. But until someone decides ownership, it's just going to continue to deteriorate.
You know, that was the same way, and Harry will remember this, the Main Avenue Bridge and Taylor, that was some PUC thing. And I think for some, whatever reason, why it became a county bridge is because I don't think the county showed up for the meeting or something like that. And, you know, if you're not there, they're kind of like, okay, give it to them, you know? It's just like when Scranton didn't show up for that Taylor landfill and we took ownership of it, you know what I mean, over there, which caused us big problems over the years. Wait, so I, it's just one of those things. It's probably going to come down as some PUC thing, because I think that goes over a railroad, doesn't it, Harry?
Um, yes.
I think one of the, one of the, one of the spans goes over a railroad.
Yeah.
It does.
There's five spans, one's over the railroad, two are over the Brook, and two are over land, over abandoned rail lines.
So, you know, the PUC, anything over railroad, they have jurisdiction over it. So, you know, no, it's a shame, because we were in conversations with the, with Pendot earlier on, when, you know, with the inspections, and if it does close, they're looking to use maybe Myrtle Street as a detour to get into the Bunker Hill section. So, and we're posted there, so it's kind of a crazy thing, you know?
Okay. Is it best to have one of the county solicitors contact the PUC?
I know that they've been working on it. Franch, Rogirio and Don Frederickson, both our solicitors, have been involved. So I'm not exactly sure. I think they did reach out to the PUC, because they have all the PUC documentation as well, so.
Okay. You're following up with it. Okay. Good. Okay. Let's continue, Steve.
Okay. Network planning now encompasses a number of different areas, and our functional class, we're still working on that, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 70, 75% is done on that. We'll be working into the analysis soon. Also, highway performance monitoring system, the HPMS, Steve and Jay have been going out at least once, if not twice a week. We have to have all of that information into Pendot by December 3rd, and they should be able to meet that deadline. There's really, on HPMS, they, they look at things like the number of intersections, whether the shoulders are in good condition. So there's really not that much change in the work. Long range plan, we just had a meeting before this one this morning with the consultants that's moving along. The long range plan will be submitted to the members of the steering committee, hopefully by the end of the day today. We're looking for November 30th for any comments to come back. If there's no fatal flaws, December 1st, we will put the LRTP off for public comment. We'll give the public until the end of December, and then we're looking at holding a public meeting mid-December, or excuse me, mid-January on that. And if that is acceptable, then it'll go to the MPO for approval on February 3rd, which is the deadline that we have to meet with federal highways. Along with that, the comprehensive plan is also moving along. Basically, the comprehensive plan will be following about a month behind the long range plan with the timeline. So we're looking at getting the comprehensive plan out to the public for public comment sometime in January, have the county commissioners have a public hearing on that, because it will have to fall under their jurisdiction. And at that point, it'll go to, again, public hearing, and then approval by the county commissioners in Lackawanna and the county council in Luzerne. On the Scranton-Luksberry downtown bike study, we're moving along with that. We had our final public meeting about a week or so ago. That is now out on the website. It'll be opened up for public comment. If anybody wants to take a look at it, I did include the link to it on the minutes, or excuse me, on the agenda, or you can just go to the MPO website. It's right on the front page. It includes a number of items, everything simple from putting sharrows, those triangles with the bicycle symbol, on the roadways with paint, and putting some signage up, sharing the road kind of signs, all the way to, and this is the big item, reversing traffic on Spruce and Linden. And we had representatives from the Downtown City Association, the Business Association, and they are not adverse to changing the traffic patterns. So that was the big thing, too, if the downtown businesses are not concerned with it. But again, that's a far way off. We would have to do traffic studies. We'd have to find the funding, because there are a number of traffic signals that would have to be reversed. We have to redo timings and things like that. So that's a long range goal, but it does seem like it is feasible. Sapa, Mary Liz, you want to give an update on that?
Yep. Moving along, we had a Zoom committee, Zoom committee meeting on October 13th for an update. Everybody's, some are ready to go. Clark Summit is actually ready to adopt. They're not going to wait till March for everybody else. They want to do it in December. They're going to put the stipulation in there that the ordinance doesn't go into effect until the other eight municipalities adopt their portion of it. I know Dunmore's winding down. They just talked with Carolyn from EPD. They're about ready. Clark Screen is setting up a meeting with the EPD for their final review. Newton Township Planning is going to recommend to the supervisors the end of this month. West Abington and Dalton are ready to go, other than some standard sections of the ordinances that have to be inserted. Waverly is in the final review. So it's, it's moving along. I know Don had said that Scranton has some new planning commission members. He needed to get up to speed on this, but as it appears now, everybody's still on target for this to happen in March.
Great. Okay. Anybody have any questions on Sapa or transportation or the bike study? Good, let's keep moving.
Okay, the Scranton-New York Passenger Rail, that with the pandemic and then some political things that happened, was kind of put on the back burner right now. But now that Congressman Cartwright is reelected again, hopefully we'll start moving forward with those meetings. But as I said, nothing has really happened since March. Hazard mitigation, Mayor?
The plan was submitted to Pima. There were some comments. They, they had some issues with the formatting of the document. It didn't quite jive to what they wanted. It took vision about less than a week to make the revision, get it back to them. They're okay with it. It's now at FEMA for final approval. They have until December 14th. That's the end of their 45-day review period. So once we hear back from them, if everything is okay, probably the beginning of next year in January, the county commissioners will be adopting, and will be starting our campaign to get all 40 municipalities to adopt it.
Great. Okay. Right. Ah, any questions? Good. PPA?
Okay, Mary Liz and I were on two different panels. Unfortunately, they were at the same time. We did have Mary Liz talk on the Sapa Plan with the consultants, Don King and Ted Ritzit from DCED. They had approximately 40 or so people on, on their conference. I was on a panel with our consultants and John Petrini on the bicycle study. We had about 75 participants. Our session went really well. There was some input and feedback and back and forth with the panelists. This was the first time the conference was held virtually. I think it went really well. You know, it's a lot better meeting in person to discuss things, but it worked. And we will be getting the actual in-person conference, hopefully in 2023 if nothing changes. Mayor, you want to talk about yours at all?
No, ours went really well. Don had a little issue with his microphone. It was kind of staticky. He also did have the cast of the office on his background, which kind of was cool. We had some good questions, and we actually went five minutes over our time, time slot. So it was, it was very interesting.
Excellent.
How did you handle, is it like a Zoom meeting that you have 75 participants online?
Right, but they're all blocked out like they can only watch, and then they have to ask questions in the chat box.
Individually like this. No kidding.
Right. The only people that you could see or hear were the, the panelists and the moderators.
No kidding. Wow. Then everybody thought it went well.
Yeah, Cindy, were you on the Sapa?
Yes, I was on the Sapa one, and I thought there was a good amount of questions. And then afterwards, looking through some of the comments, there was someone from outside of the area who thought it was a really good program and possibly a good model for other communities around the state to look at moving forward.
Right. Yeah, that's what our goal is, because it's so diverse. It's so diverse.
Yeah.
That's great. Well, congratulations to all you guys. Cindy, thanks so much for your help. I know you're actively involved in that.
Yep, no problem. It was.
I, I don't know. Cindy, I don't know if we got a final total, but I had heard there was somewhere around 365 people involved in the conference.
Yes. I, I don't, I don't think him ever told, gave us a final, but I, it was definitely in the mid-300s. Yes, definitely.
Wow.
So that was really good participation for a virtual, because we usually have about 500, I think, at the conferences, so more than half.
Excellent.
That's fantastic. Fantastic. Congratulations to all of you guys.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good job.
Yeah, good.
And the last item is our voluntary participation in the Chesapeake Plan. Mayor?
Yeah, voluntary, quote unquote. We've come up, we are still meeting with DEP, and they are pushing this along. They are really pushing it, and I just don't know. At this point, we had to come up with the steering committee. We have like three pages of names for people to be on this steering committee. And they're also looking for us, because they don't have enough money for the 26 counties that are, that need to do this within the Chesapeake Bay watershed. So they're looking for counties to pair up, or three or four to share a coordinator, which either would be a staff person or a consultant. I mean, we've decided it would be a consultant on our end, but they're pushing us, we, you know, we were okay with Luzerne County, working with them. They're trying to push us to either get a third Susquehanna, or maybe Schoolkill, or four counties with Columbia and Montour, which we're not real receptive to right now. We have another meeting with them next Wednesday to keep discussing this. But the Conservation District has really taken the lead on this, and we're just kind of support. But I just don't know the, their timeframe. You know, they wanted to know who was going to speak from the county at the, at the kickoff meeting. Well, you know, Jerry and I were like, well, we don't really even know what you want in this, what, you know, maybe DEP needs to be the one talking, because, you know, we would look kind of foolish not knowing what we were, you know, discussing.
Yep.
So that's where we're at now.
Just for a frame of rep, sorry, Harry.
No, go ahead.
Just for a frame of reference, when we did the Lackawanna River Watershed Plan in the mid, mid 80s, it was over $350,000. And that was just a qual, quantity, or yeah, quantity study. This is a quality study, and they're looking at $100,000.
To share with four, up to four counties.
Is the Conservation District going to be our lead entity within Lackawanna?
Yes.
It seems like they.
Luzerne County is all, their conservation is also going to be the lead down there.
Yeah, we'll provide some support.
Right.
Okay.
It would make, it would make sense to team with counties that are in the same watershed of our branch of the Susquehanna. You move off to Columbia, Montour is way outside. You're dealing with a different branch of the river. I think they call that the east branch out there at Susquehanna. I'm not sure east. So Luzerne makes perfect sense.
Luzerne, Susquehanna, somewhat. We, I mean, we worked with Susquehanna when we did the Lackawanna River Watershed, because part of the Susquehanna counties in that.
Wyoming would.
Wyoming, they told us doesn't have to do it.
Why?
Because they're under their, whatever their nutrients, or whatever, you know, whatever they need to meet, they've already met it, which we, we find hard to believe, because counties above them, like Bradford, and you know, it's flowing down through there.
Right, yeah.
We don't get it, but they told us they don't have to do it, because we did suggest Wyoming.
And when you deal with, you're talking a lot of agricultural waste, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the.
That's the majority of it. It's the majority of this problem with Chesapeake is, is farmland fertilizer.
Right.
And sediment.
Okay. All right.
Considering the amount of farmland in Bradford County, I don't know what's, it's going into Wyoming.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't understand their calculations, but that's what they said.
All right. Good. Let's back up a little bit here. Let's do the approval of our meeting minutes from October, since we have Mr. Zero with us.
I just made a big guy. Needed you.
Everybody have a chance to review the minutes of the October meeting?
Yeah, Harry, I'll make a motion to approve them. John?
John, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motions approved. Our bills, any questions on our bills? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Cindy. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Let's get on to new business, our development reviews.
Okay, as we mentioned at the beginning, there was an error in the resolution, so I will change that for the, the minutes. But basically, what you see there is all correct in the reviews themselves. So I'll start off with page 19, the Lofts of Village Square in Scranton.
Yep. Juan actually did this review, but I'll summarize it up real quick. This is a JBAS project, and you know, he's been doing a lot of warehouse and conversions to lofts and multifamily. We assume, this is actually not a bad plan. There's some issues, questions on the ingress and egress through South Keister Court. We're not sure if it's a public right-of-way. You know, the standard no-SEAL missing from the plan. There are, it's showing us two separate parcels, except, and there was no lot consolidation, although there's one tax ID number or something. We're trying to figure that out. The big thing is, the R1A zone does not allow multifamily units. We were assuming that a variance was issued, but it was not provided to us. So based on what we received, we recommend a denial, because it doesn't conform to zoning.
Mary Liz, we reviewed the same, came before, came to the city engineer, La Bella, and we reviewed it. Cindy, your son did a great job. I think we come up with 40-some, 48 comments, maybe, including some of the ones with the county. We too believe it needs a lot consolidation plan. We believe it needs a, it's above the disturbance, so it might need an individual permit, a permit from an MPDS permit. And I believe the zoning variances were granted, only because building permits have been issued for the interior work. For those who don't know, this is the old Gold Star, which I think became Giant Floor and Wall up there on Stafford Avenue. So you, that's the building. It's a great project, but there's a lot of work to get this through. There's a lot, like I said, we had, we had 40-some comments that went out to Manzanelli, like this month.
John, how do the neighbors feel about the increase in residential density out there? Any issues? Traffic?
No, it, it, it's basically, the majority of this site was a parking lot. And they're only, I don't think they're having any additions to the building, but what triggered the land development, talking to Donnie, was it's in the right, it, it, it's a, because it's the res, because it's, it's a, it's a not-conforming use, but because it's going back to residential rather than a, a commercial use or a manufacturing use, that's what triggered the land development from our end. So, but I, if they got the variances, I believe either public support or no opposition to the project, you know, knowing the way, you know, sometimes the zoning board will lean. So I believe they just have to get the zoning letter in, but there's technical things that we're, that we have to work through as the city, you know? There's not a lot of increase in stormwater, but it's, to get it, they have to get it, we believe, an MPDS permit because of the amount of disturbance. It was greatly understated on the, on the plans.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. And it is, it's recommended, approved. I mean, it's approvable plan if they would give us the information from the zoning board.
Very good. Thank you.
Like I said, you don't go through the, the technical stuff, Mary Liz, like we do in a much detail, but it's approvable from our end, but it's going to take some effort. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Just grinding the numbers and getting the correct data into the, into the city engineer and planner.
Very good. Steven, want to continue?
Okay, next one is on page 25, Vesper Northeast Logistics. And that again is Mary Liz.
Yep, this is another one that Joanna looked at. Harry, you may know about this plan. This is south of 502, kind of just above the airport, and actually extends around the airport into Pittston Township. This is the old Goex, I think, area, right?
Oh, back in the old.
Yeah. They're putting in two large warehouses. One is actually over 100,000 square feet, and then the second building, which actually straddles the county line, is over a million square feet. Some of our comments, again, the surveyors and engineers' seals and signatures not on the map. Note about floodplain, even though there isn't really any floodplain there, that they were, you know, referencing the old maps instead of the new maps that went into effect in August. Music subdivision orders requires a landscaping plan, which they didn't provide. We questioned the Pendot permit. If they need an upgrade, they need a traffic study for 502. Also, they need any upgrade or permit to the rail crossing. The Luzerne County Rail Authority owns the line that crosses there. And again, not really our jurisdiction, but just, we did some research. It's a C1 conservation zone in Pittston Township, and warehousing is not an allowable use, and no one told us if, again, variances or zoning changes were done for that portion.
Mary Liz, is this one of those projects that both municipalities, the Music Borough and Pittston Township have jurisdiction to review this in its entirety?
Yes, they both, local control over both.
Yep.
In fact, we have a meeting, a Zoom meeting, tonight on the same project.
So this is the old Goex site down there, the old black powder site down there, right?
You got it, right, right at the end of the runway of the airport.
Yep.
We did a lot of work for Goex. I'm talking CECO back, way back in the day. We did a lot of work for Goex down there, I remember, years ago. So, but this, it is what it is. Harry, was this the same place that years ago, man, but any of Semenza, like owned the, he owned like a, like he used to make fireworks down there? I believe it's the same site.
Yes. Yep. Yeah. They had a couple explosions down there.
Yeah, they did. I remember those.
It rocked, it rocked the community. Oh, yeah. Okay. Moving along, how about this Patoniak subdivision there? What's this all about?
Whoa.
Oh, that, that is a cousin. And there was a, a bit of a discrepancy there between what the tax map showed and what the surveyor actually surveyed. And there was a a bit of a discrepancy there between what the tax map showed and what the surveyor actually surveyed. So Joanne was talking to the assessor's office to try and get that straightened out.
Good, okay. Continue, Steve. Thanks.
Following page, page twenty-nine.
What was that, John?
It's not the tax map to be wrong.
Oh, no.
Never.
On page twenty-nine.
Yep, twenty-nine.
Pine Grove and Waverly. I actually did the review on this one and we were withholding a decision on it. There are a number of concerns. This is a Y-shaped development with two cul-de-sacs. They're coming in as a conservation development, which is an allowable use within Waverly Township. However, there are five categories of conservation use and you have to choose one and then that determines the densities, open space ratios and things like that. They didn't choose any, so we have nothing to review it against. Along with that, it appears that they exceed the maximum number of two family units in a conservation design. The roadways and some other improvements, they claim are not going to be turned over to the township, but they they talk about where is it here? They're not going to turn them over, but then they talk about the bio retention basins being maintained. So it it's a jumble of how these infrastructure improvements are going to be handled. The other thing is with two cul-de-sacs, number of units coming off of them, I think is excessive under the ordinance. So there there are just a whole bunch of things. One of the other issues is they use the wrong floodplain maps, even though there's no floodplain there. But again, it's the wrong citation. The review fee was incorrect. So there were a number of different items with it that needed to be addressed, so at this point, we're withholding a recommendation.
Yeah, they they actually came to Waverly Township about a year ago with a sketch plan on this and at the time, they said it was option two out of the five options, but why they did not put it on the preliminary plans is is beside me because the township kind of looked at the sketch plan based on option two. And there was a discussion on the cul-de-sac issue back then and the planning commission actually had a couple of meetings and made a determination. The way their ordinance reads, it says eighteen units, no max, no maximum or minimum length on a cul-de-sac, just eighteen units per. But because it was one road coming in and then kind of branched out like a Y, they determined that each part was a separate, so according, the township is okay with the number of units on there. It was kind of ambiguous on how you determine what a cul-de-sac is. So that was the only thing that they gave them guidance on at this point was that they were okay to put the twenty-three units. But they're not very, they're not very happy about it. It could have been a little bit more creative, but.
Be concerned with the number of units is presently, there would be twenty-three.
That's right.
Additional open space, plus there are actually four other units that access that roadway right now. That they didn't include in their count.
Yeah, they did.
There's the possibility of another eighty ten being developed.
Yeah, they're aware of that, but they they made that determination, so.
This is not going to be a public road?
Yeah, I don't know about that either.
Yeah, what they they stated is the plan states no part of the development are intended for dedication. Then later on, they say the plan includes public sewers and public roads. So if they're not going to dedicate it, how are they public? And then who's going to maintain them if they're not? The notes and the wording on the plan didn't match.
Okay. Good job.
I mean, the non-dedication of the roads just leads for all kinds of issues down the road. I mean, these developers are going to pull out.
Yeah.
Whether the township makes them post bonds or something. I mean, it's just going to be a nightmare for the township down the road because the people are going to come to them saying, who's going to pave the road or, you know, plow it or whatever. It's going to be crazy, so.
Yeah.
And the road didn't meet the standards. The road didn't meet the township's standards.
Oh, it was too narrow, Steve?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Do they allow private roads?
No, not for that that size. They allow up to five you five lots on what they call a country lane, which would be a private road, but anything over that, no. So that'll be a, they will beat this like a dead horse, trust me.
Okay.
I've been doing some some consulting with Waverly for almost twenty-five years now and I know how they operate, so yeah, this will be thoroughly reviewed. Yeah.
Yeah, the road, the roadway met the minor roadway standards, but because it's the only access in, it should not be considered a minor road, should be a collector. So that's another issue.
Good job.
Good job is right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And on page thirty-one, thirty-two, S and G acquisitions in Oliphant. This is an interesting one. This is the Acorn Hills Development, if you're familiar with that, just below the Mid Valley Industrial Park. It's been there for a number of years, but we never saw the original subdivision. So we never made comment on the original. We do not have any of the plans. This proposal is to move a roadway and change the lot configurations. But since we never received the original plan, there's a lot of information and they came in as a minor subdivision. So there are a number of issues with it. Again, we're withholding recommendation.
Any others?
And finally, on page thirty-three, I did a lot of reviews this month, which was unusual. Page thirty-three, this is settlers' view. They came in with their final plan for final review. In reviewing it, there were a number of items that we made comment on on the original two reviews back a few years ago that were addressed. Primarily, the plans still are not sealed by a Commonwealth Registered Surveyor and to be recorded, they need that. And that was made mention of in both reviews we did in seven and eighteen and sixteen, I believe. They have three bio retention basins. They only talk about maintenance on one of them. And they said they're going to turn that over to the borough for maintenance and that's the largest basin. Haven't seen anything, any documentation on that. They're going to transfer land to Heritage Valley Authority along the backside of development, which is grass along Grassy Island Creek for a trail system. We have a concern because the property line ends at the Northeast PA Rail Authority and you cannot have the public accessing that right of way without a concurrence from the rail authority. That was not included. And on the other end of it, it dead ends at another property, so there's some concerns there that need to be addressed. Also, they have an odd shaped parcel at the end of one of their cul-de-sacs. It's sort of like two fingers with a bulb in the middle. It's the old rail properties that this was developed on. They're not showing any development there or what's going to happen to it and you can't, under the ordinance, have remnants of land remaining. So that needs to be addressed. And and again, on top of that, they did not submit the right review fee for us, which going back to the other two reviews that we did, never had the proper payments either. So this is kind of like a continuing saga with this development. So we did give a conditional approval. It is an approvable plan if these items are addressed. But we have to wait and see what happens with it. And finally, Mary Liz, Clark Summit zoning.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know I mentioned it under the Sapa portion. This is the review for the Clark Summit portion of the Sapa Plan. We know that Clark Summit really paid attention and really, you know, put a lot of effort into their portion. So there was like six, seven minor comments. The one, the one I will call out is under their outdoor storage, they referenced other relevant zoning ordinances or separate zoning. I I think it was a typo or they meant to say something else because how could you have more than one zoning ordinance?
Correct.
So other than that, again, I said some just some minor questions and hopefully the other eight, when we get them, will be similar.
Good. Any others?
Mary Liz, I'm curious about your comment about the crematorium. What would you suggest there?
I don't know. They they allow a funeral home and a crematorium as an accessory use in a different district. But then they, I don't know if they, if it was a typo, if they also had wanted it in this town downtown zone because they did have the crematorium part as an accessory use, but no listing of a funeral home. So what's it going to be? What's a crematorium going to be accessory to? You know, a convenience store? You know, it has to be a funeral home. So it they are allowing it and I think it's the R two. I think it's the R two or whatever they're calling that town suburban resident, whatever the new designation is. But I think they might have wanted to allow it here, but somewhere missed it.
Any other?
Isn't that main, isn't like that one funeral home is right on the main street up there?
Right, and that is the town downtown, so that's why I think that they they might.
They wanted to not preclude him from putting a crematorium in at some time, right?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Well, I don't know how you, you know, if you don't want it there in the future, then you need to get it out of accessory. You know, you need to get crematorium out of accessory. So like I said, it either needed to come out or go in, but you know, something needs to be addressed there.
I think the only one that was Scranton was Miller Bean, I think, put a crematorium in in Scranton. I mean, I think he used an outbuilding in the back, you know?
And there's been a court, a court case, a state court case that says you have to allow crematorium as accessory to a funeral home.
Okay, so it's already a deal.
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe there was some kind of a court case on that or a hearing or something in Clark Summit about a year or so ago because we did get some information here.
And I think that's been approved.
Anybody else have any comments on our development reviews for the month? Any questions? Hearing none, do I enter here? I'll entertain a motion to approve the development reviews.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bruce. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Cindy. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Development reviews approved.
Harry, again, just for the record, I believe there was two developed plans in the in the resolution. So I'd like to abstain, make it noted that I have, I I voted for the other plans, but not the two Lobella plans.
Make sure we make a notation of that in our minutes.
Yeah, I got it.
It was there from last month too. I appreciate that because I just don't want to give the inkling of any malfeasance or misfeasance.
No conflicts there, right?
No conflict, Harry. I've had enough conflict. I've been accused of more conflicts than than the word conflict, you know?
Done there, done that, John. You're right.
You're right. I think I saw two in there, so I want to just, you know, back off, okay?
Is there any other business to come before the commission this month? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make.
So moved.
Your adjourn.
Rose. Hey, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. Great meeting.
Enjoy your Thanksgiving. Turkey Day is coming soon.